The finger on the...
Well, we know that on Isle 20, we have a rescinding console on this fucking cap of homelessness. But what does that dumb bitch know about theory? When we know that news is done really nothing to compromise the path and the bridge between what David O'Connor has said at the Brentwood and UCLA son of a dick to transfer, already said, A2 to the Jefferson purpose. No, bitch. Judge Carter argued the fucking House of Representatives, you dumb cunt. And it struck an authorized fucking court, you up there, China boys, to process the neighborhood coalition to fix its fucking enterprise with criminal corruption in development. That's the path and that's the bridge I'm connecting to, pumpkin head. Then on Kevin Delio, who never would say fuck the police, but the other Kevin Delio did, fuck her too.
There's no, it's F-bomb gone. Yeah, it's political theater.
Want to transfer, is this still? I don't know.
Because they don't listen. They do not listen.
Look, I asked the controller to look into the instructions that David O'Connor, the judge-
Oh yeah, he's been doing it for years, I think. Actually, he gets them, he rattles them like a, they get very rattled by him. And goat puppet. So I think it's just to agitate. I don't like the language.
So, we all understand that Brentwood and UCLA suck a dick is in a lot of trouble with Judge David O'Connor, who put his military boot up your ass for stealing. Steve Sobel is a fucking criminal and that's the reason why he's over on the LAPD Police Commission and what we should find and investigate what criminal problems he created with LAPD. Fuck the police. This is what I do. That's my problem. I will always have a problem with the police. Because the goddamn police is to protect and serve, not watch and watch and see that we have these fucking people sleeping on our fucking cell phone history. Or the fucking matter that goddamn fucking squad doesn't do a goddamn thing to save me from all this shit. So in other words, 22th U.S.C. 1980 before I get off the police.
All right, Pastor Thomas, your excuse for the meeting. Pastor Thomas, we're asking you to move the meeting.
Somebody can't call. Somebody can't call.
Pastor, I'm calling you. You have been excused from this meeting. So, again, we apologize for the offensive language that's used by Mr. Irving and I especially use by other speakers during their public comment. So, they are trying to, my task is bait people in to interrupt in this meeting to voice their opinions about being offended. So we hear you, hoping half allow us during the public comment. If it happens again outside of their specific individual public comment period, we will address it as a disruption to this meeting. But during public comment, we stop giving them a day and do what they want you to do, which is essentially to interrupt the meeting, which forces us to warrant the people who are stopping the public comment. So, again, none of this is condoned or approved by city council. It is a part of the public comment process.
Uh, Mr. Martin, ALP, yes, absolutely. I support every single agenda and support ALPD department. We need additional police services, uh, in the District 12. I don't know who district is that, but I know-
We're back to public comment.
There's a criminal looting, criminal rioting, uh, criminal robbery, criminal rape, criminal interruption on all areas, everywhere in the city of LA. So, we need definitely, uh, support whatever council member who are supporting additional police services. Uh, this agenda talked about Comanda Division, and then, uh, I am familiar with that division, and then in that division, they need-
No, he doesn't string.
They have a huge staff shortage of LAPD officers. Those LAPD officers, they are working 60 hours, 70 hours every week. They do not have a chance to, uh, be employed with their faculty at the local day. I am here to support, uh, the ALPD Comanda Division and the ALPD all divisions.
Uh, what, what? First of all, did I miss a question?
Regarding, uh, additional homeless services.
Yes, it's the City Council, LA.
I'm here to support additional homeless, uh, homeless services. As a member of the homelessness, I never receive any services from my council member, District 1. Uh, if any council member wants to, uh, support additional, uh, homeless services, I am the number one supporter. I'll be the number one cheerleader. The only, uh, the only issue is that-
At Los Angeles.
Everyone talking about additional homeless services, the improved life, no action. We are still, I'm still seeing a lot of, uh-
They're frustrated, you know what I mean? And I think it kind of-
I'm still seeing, uh, homeless people that-
Kind of makes you have to get a little loud or extreme to get attention. Because look, they don't even pay attention.
We're collecting more food. We're collecting more water. Uh, so, I definitely believe that, uh, we only talk about homeless. We never do much-
Not only appearance, LA City Council made it, exactly.
Number 22, who are in my homey? Uh, number 22 is about speed bumps and the speed table in the council district group. I actually was concerned numerous times in this council that there are so many street takeovers. Yesterday, there's a doctor victory, and then there's several doctor deaths in the street takeover. So, we need more speed bump. We need more speed tables, uh, across all districts of the city, by the way.
It gets hard for me because I'm one of those people, I try to see everybody's point of view, and so it gets very confusing for me. And just, I hate it, so, it's just, I don't feel like dealing with that. Yeah, there is a lot of characters. I think they were kind of created, I think it's like, you come here, you know, because you want, you figure they're listening. But look, they don't even listen. They don't even, I don't even know if you could see. I'm sure that's intentional. Good, because they should. Yeah, no, it's fine, guys. I, I, I can't, here.
I'm sorry, Speaker, Speaker, the topic here, so we're- Speaker, you're gonna wait. Mr. City Attorney, I just want us to advise the folks in the gallery that if you can't conduct this meeting, we will clear the chambers and we will carry on the council business going forward. Yes, so, again, I understand that people are talking about things that may be very offensive to other folks, but during their public comment, we need to allow them to speak. So, again, it's not just like-
He's right there. You have to, um, that's the only chance that people get to speak either way. Yeah, you can, it's public, so, yes, I mean, you can- I mean, he does a lot of this to, you know, he goes- Exactly. Exactly, Nick. Yours and me.
Yes, Emily Marini, it is, uh, 3:00 AM, Saturday, 7:30 AM, and we have a public comment, 16, 17, 18.
LAPD needs to get out.
So, I've come here a very long way from the great state of New York, and Isle 16 is trying to use council time on whether a Hollywood actor needs to have the name instated on Hollywood Boulevard. Unless, if you were gonna waste coun- council time on whether a Hollywood actor's name is gonna go on Hollywood Boulevard, how can it just say the fact that a channel actor by the name of Tom Cruise is still on Hollywood Boulevard? I'm here to protest Scientology, and you best believe that if this council wants to waste its precious time concerning whether a Hollywood actor needs to be on Hollywood Boulevard now, how can it just say the fact that a channel symbol of Tom Cruise is still on there was very affiliated with Scientology? And I'm at this place thinking more or less directly to you, Mr. City Attorney. If your office is out there wasting precious government time on whether a channel club is able to have members of its affiliation have its name on there, that's absolutely disgusting. For 17, Isle number 17, if the LAPD is still requesting more time, yeah, when it comes to issuing a rest warrant for a child sex murderer who is a Scientologist, probably looking at Anthony DeMaris Jr., and then drabbing their fucking feet on it. Yeah, I can find out where this guy is located and do a bit of jobs by communicating with the county of arts. This guy is shooting at any press leaders. We have his fucking address. Yeah, your office is not gonna match you with a rest warrant, and the LAPD apparently can't be bothered to do better fucking job, and also wants this guy. He's not the only child sex murderer, so why is it that more funding for the LAPD continues to not be used for investors of real dangerous actors and real dangers to the community, child sex murderers? And after general public comment, you drop, you drop certain charges, you're gonna drop more charges, and you know it's bullshit. Then you're about to reflect this meeting. I want a recent theft of an airplane there and everything of the mother of the reason to. I've got the three different, four different offices of three different nations at my city attorney. Let me the fucking out what I've taught you. I can't afford all of this, but it's weird to hunt down the child sex murders that apparently your own son pronounces and your assets are a last best, they cannot provide a fucking move. What are you doing with your time, man? This is your legacy. If this needs to be out of somewhere, across your house, for you being a channel protector, the wrong fucking lady wouldn't let you do it. How did you learn? You even have privilege to, uh, even share it with a soldier in Georgia who can burn your oil at the fucking Scientology organization. This is a fucking joke. Your job, your role.
Yes, alright. Good job, Henry.
On this wonderful day to celebrate Kevin Delio, let's give him a hand. And let's look at the good work that he's doing in number 21. Four proports. Look at this. For what? A four of those houses. How can he can't do this, you messes? How can Kevin get it done? Oh, because Kevin gives a fuck. That's right, he does. Now we have speed bumps in CD 10, the power park of Corcoran is speed bumps. He is a speed bump. A fucking nobody's speed bump. How many of us are fuckin' speed bumps in a speed bump asshole district? And then we have a full complaint with the CPUC. Fire my Kevin. Kevin's going after these cocksuckers from the Union Pacific Railroad blockage. That's right. That's right. He's turning forward. He's coming out, so we know. Turning items.
So please move on to another item.
No, you're not gonna do that.
Okay.
I told you not to do that. I was just talking about. I told you not to do that. Under 24, is that all? Holy shit, that hurt my nose. So then we do, front 33, the Justice Asshole Order Act. To get the design policies to ensure landlords a reasonable return. Oh, that. Authored by whom? Communist Santo Martinez Stalin and Lethine Ramon Nudo? How can you do that? How can you be in favor of the private sector? You're violating your oath of communism. Let's give them a hand. That's right. I know, man, that we need to confiscate all of the rental properties from landlords and get the fucking whip free to all of the Angelinos who vote for Kevin Delio, and let's do it. That's right. That's what we're gonna do. Thank you. This is a great something, don't you? Yes, you did. Continue your discussion for time, man. Oh, okay. You're not gonna hit me? Why would I do that? Oh, under 25, the Cala District. More treason, sleaze, he wants an in-OK junior school to close the pedestrian toll where they sell all the toys and the kids. Let's give them a hand. Holy shit. Now you just call the front dealers in your district, that's all. Yes, and that's today. Your publicist boy, Justin Kevin Delio, for LRC, let's give him a hand. That's right. After listening to this opponent ripping the fucking ALPD apart, I realized that's my job. I'm the one that credits my ALPD, that's the council member. The city council member's job is to lift the boots. The wrong boys, to stop the cops, the wrong of the police. That's the job over here in the horseshit. My job is to be the crack. So I don't want anybody here in the council standing up to the cops. You've got it, you messes. You've got Stalin over there. You've got it. See, because, well, there's a problem, and a little bit of rape. They have no choice but to call 911, or they'd be on hold for 35 minutes. So after the rape is completed, they can do this. Run away. Fuck the police. That's my boss.
Isn't that what y'all signed up for? That's what y'all signed up for. That's the heroes of our community, y'all. The heroes of our community.
Huh? Oh, yeah, for sure. I agree. You know what this kid right there? I can't see. I wanna know what happened to him. Do we know what happened to him? What happened to her son?
Oh, she got killed.
By police, by LAPD.
Allegedly, that's what the thing was.
Hello? It's not working. He told me to go next. Good morning. Um, Audit LA, um, and I, I wanna talk on 15, 16, 17, and maybe more, so that- Okay, the first one is 15. I'm gonna ask that you make sure that the person being approved for the Charter Reform Commission is a high-level Scientologist. Um, because Scientology has the real power in this city. Okay? Because I've come to every single department meeting, everything, to get non-ADA-approved sidewalk, I mean, um, planters removed, and none of y'all can do it. Uh, Mr. Martinez, Santo Marti, are you here? Not listening? None of you are listening, I know. But, um, he can't even get it done. So, make sure you get a Scientologist on here because they have the real power in this city. Number 16. Kerry Washington. Um, sadly, I don't know who Kerry Washington is, but that's a Hollywood thing, you know? Like, that whole Hollywood Walk of Fame thing. Why is City Council dealing with that when we have real issues? You know, we have issues like, um, what's going on here in this room, all these issues, housing issues, uh, police issues, uh, pothole issues, non-ADA compliance of an entire city. Um, let's add the cult of Scientology to that mix. Um, so why are we worried? Why are you guys bothering with, um, these stars? I would like to know what, uh, Smoke and Scan thinks about you guys having to work on that. I'm curious. Um, 17. Okay, definitely. I, LAPD, you know, and I, I'm not somebody that hates all cops. I, I don't. I mean, DeWard is pretty cool and these guys here are pretty cool. Um, I don't hate all cops. But I hate bad cops, and I hate bad policing and bad police ideas. Uh, I also hate that they get half the city budget and, like, nothing gets resolved. I mean, you guys, you know, I, I get the overtime because, you know, like, certain protesters are being swatted all the time, and so that might create a lot of overtime. But what I would suggest to help fill the, if you need more money for, um, the overtime, is to fine Scientology for all the swatting calls. Okay, so far, we have figured out it's probably close to a quarter of a million dollars of city, um, resources being wasted against protesters of Scientology. Okay, um, that's a lot of money. That's a lot more than 200, I mean, 50,000. Why don't you go after the people who are making swatting calls? I'm on topic, because I'm saying- I'm sorry? Oh, okay. Um, well, then, let's do, let's get, the one for housing. Let's get, uh, more housing for the people that need it. Thank you. Okay, yes, for a public comment. I've been coming to City Hall, um, whether online or in person now since June. Okay, with a simple, uh, this is a simple one, an easy one. And again, the only one who pays attention here is Mr. McCosker. He's the only one. And, you know, I appreciate that, Mr. McCosker. Um, but I want the, um, planters at Elrond Hubbard Way and Fountain to, A, be permitted, like, you go after everyone else when they don't permit their, um, you know, things, and you fine them when they don't listen. And I want them ADA compliant. They are not. There's a 3, 4-block radius now that I cannot get on or off any, um, you know, any vehicle that needs a ramp because you guys won't do your job. Uh, Mr. Martinez's office is always saying, you know, he did say, thankfully, yeah, they're working on it. But it seems like nobody knows who does what, like, you know, is it Brer Street Services? Who does what? Can you just remove or make ADA compliant these planters? I know it's a minor issue for everyone else, but not for me. Thank you. How's it close if they called everyone? But didn't they call him? I mean, if they signed up, how, huh? If he signed up. Yeah, they called his name. No, if you called him, they- Yeah, they only give it a certain amount of time. See, that's what pisses people off. Then you wonder why they come yelling. This is the family people, right? I love it. Power the people. It's our house. This is our house. Let them speak. Let them speak. Let them speak. Let them speak.
Let them speak.
Let them, it's our house. This is the people's house. You have the city attorneys here. Let them, they signed up. You can't cut it off, the last guy, they cut it off. That's, that is so unfair. If, get a Scientologist here, he'll be able to speak. Tell him you're a Scientologist. They'll have to let you speak then. People take time out of their day to be here. Tell him you're a Scientologist. They'll let you speak. They run the city. You can't make it a tie, but this is unfair. This is how they piss people off. This is how, this is why there's a goat puppet. This is why there's- Oh, he's so calm and quiet. He just takes it all in. He's like, I know what this is. He could have been dug. Alright, I tied that out. No, there's none of that. None of that. Them speak. Let, you called them. It's the people's house. It's the people's house. People's house. Let them speak. They should, that you called him. It'd be different if you didn't call him, but you called him. They called him, right? I, I could see if they didn't call him. Right. I mean, I could see if they didn't call him, but they called him. They waited in their time, yeah. So unfair. Like, I don't even care if I agree or disagree. You, you're called, you- Yeah, it's almost 12:30. Yeah, this is un, this is unacceptable. This is protest. No, they signed up, man. You gotta let him speak. That is, this is active, yes. This is the people's house. That's not fair. Um, I, they came down, they wait, they did, they did the process. They signed up.
Everyone has a voice.
They signed up. They waited in line patiently. Occupy Council, too. Come on. They did it correctly. Right, I mean, like, they, they signed up and waited. They didn't bulldoze their way through to the front. The people are going nuts. Even I'm getting feisty. No, they can't take, come on, he, he signed up. He signed up. He waited in the line. He waited their, they waited their turn. They waited their turn. That's not right, guys. Come on, they waited their turn. They signed up. Why did you call their name if there's not enough time? You shouldn't have called their name. You called their name. Oh, come on, guys. This is so disappointing. Shame. They called their name. They signed up. They called their name. That is unfair. That's unfair. Even give them one minute, even just public comment.
That was inappropriate, Mr. Attorney.
Give them at least one minute.
That was inappropriate, Mr. Attorney.
Well, we're trying to get... They signed up. These two guys over here, they signed up to speak. They signed up. They waited patiently in line, and then they get to the front of the line. They stopped. That's not fair. Like, there's... That's not fair. Duarte, that ain't fair. That's not cool. The council, they... Yeah, they went into... I don't know. Wow, man. I seen it for myself. This is why... People ask why there's a goat puppet. This is why.
You know that they signed up. They were called. There were only two left.
Yeah, I believe it. But it's gonna be FBI. Hello, FBI, open up. That's what it's gonna end up being. Fix my camera. I... Sorry, guys. This is my phone camera. That ain't fair, guys. You did everything right. I stand with you. That's... That was wrong. That was wrong. Man, that was... That is wrong. They stood in line patiently, let everyone else do their thing. Gentlemen, that's a gentleman. You guys are gentlemen, standing, waiting, letting everyone speak. They get up, and then they can't speak. Make it make sense, people. Make it make sense. Yeah, it would have been six more minutes, maximum. At the most, even if they said public comment only, but at the most, six minutes. Come on. We're willing to wait. Me neither. They get to speak. Yes. Voltaire said that. Oh, hours. Voltaire, yes, that's... No, man, that's not cool at all. And I'm sorry for your shot, man. Them speak. Yeah, Becky's getting fey... We're gonna get feisty here. No, this ain't right. Thank you. That's a bad... Don't do that more. That's like hurtful. I'm working on him. I am working on him. Because, you know, all my people, they wanna hear you have to say, because you have such good points, and then you lose everyone on that one. I know. Can we just do that one, though? I don't mind all the others, but... Please, please. Okay, we gotta commit here, because like, we wanna hear you, but that just... You know? Yeah. I'm working, you know, like, we... Because I wanna hear you have to say, but then, like, it starts... Because then I have to edit you out, and I don't wanna have to edit, because I hate that. I hate it with a passion. I hate it, detest it. There's no room in our society for it anymore. No, well, no, freedom's alive. Just got to speak up. I didn't get kicked out. I didn't get hauled out by Duarte, so I guess it's a good day. There you go. I know. I felt it. I could feel the heat boiling down. Did he tell you he got a commendation for having good teeth, good hair, and posture? Yeah, yeah. Look at his... Yeah. Yeah, that's my chat, too. Yeah. Yeah, he's... Look at his hair. He's got nice hair. Well, there you go. See? But, you know, and, yeah. Gotta work for yours. Come looking good. That's what... Me and my chat, that's what we want. Is come looking good and don't violate my rights, and we're cool.